Start with a roll call, please.
Great. Mayor Weiss.
Here.
Councilmember Feller.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Lowry.
Here.
Councilmember Sanchez.
Here.
Councilmember Kern.
Here.
At this time, we're going to have Pastor RJ Orson here to present the invocation. Please stand.
Dear Lord, thank you for this opportunity to come before you and do what's best for our city. And I know there are many people here of different backgrounds and beliefs and have all come to this point at a different way. But we all come here and we ask for wisdom, Lord, that we can do what is best for the City of Oceanside. And I pray for the council members and every person in this room that you grant them that wisdom and discernment to do what is best. And we thank you for this time. Amen.
This time, we hope you to explore Mari Salas here to present the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, individual with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
At this time, we will have an update from Miracosta College President, Dr. Sunny Cook. Welcome.
Thank you. Thanks for having me. I like to come periodically and just tell you a little bit about what I think you might be interested in that's happening at Miracosta. And so I have with me three of our publicly elected governing board members, and that is Dr. David Broad, the president of our board, George McNeil, and also Dr. Bill Fisher, who is with the governing board as well. So I'd like to tell you, and this may surprise you, that about 37% of our overall students are residents of Oceanside. So that includes the credit and the non-credit and the not-for-credit, our adult learning center here, the CLC on Mission. So overall, that's about 37% of our students that live in the City of Oceanside. So you can tell that, you know, serving this community is very important to us. And so I'll tell you about a few of those things that we've done over the last few years to really reach into the high schools and to create a college-going culture and some of the results of what we're seeing. So we've had a seven-year federal Gear Up grant that is really a partnership between Miracosta and Gear Up, and Oceanside Unified, to create a college-going culture among the families and the students. And so we've worked with some of these students since eighth grade, and they graduated from high school last year. Many of them have come to Miracosta. In the last two years, we've seen a 12% increase in the number of students that are coming from Oceanside Unified to Miracosta. Now, we didn't just create a college-going culture so they would go to Miracosta. We took them to colleges and universities all across the state and in some cases, a nation. And so I think this 12% represents a much bigger impact on the Oceanside students because you're seeing 12% only at Miracosta, but that can be carried out across public universities as well. So we're very pleased with that partnership and we're looking for ways to sustain the work that we've been doing. This past fall, we also instituted what we call the Miracosta Promise, and it was an opportunity to make sure that all of the students, all the people within our community that wanted to go to college were able to do so, so that finances would not be a barrier. So it was a partnership between the college, between private donors to our foundation, and also the students themselves. So we saw nearly 500 students benefit from this program this fall, and the retention and the success of those students is higher than that statewide average, is higher than the normal student that we would see. So again, a really positive impact to the community, making sure that students that want to come and receive a college education are able to do that and that finances are not a challenge. Those students received the first year of college free. They received all their mandatory fees paid for. They had to maintain a certain level of credits and GPA, but they also received, I think most importantly to them, $1,000 textbook support. So the textbook loans and textbooks, so that those students could have a textbook on the very first day and really be ready to learn. We've also increased the amount of dual enrollment that we're doing with the high school. So in both of the Oceanside High School districts, as high schools, we will be doing college courses at the high school site at both El Camino and Oceanside High School. We are seeing students participating in those courses to get extra challenge, that when they need an extra challenge, to get a head start on college, to build the confidence that they can do college. All of those classes are free to the high school student, and they save them money, they save them time. Those classes give them a leg up on getting into college and so forth. And overall, the 350 students or so that have participated from across our district, we estimate that we've saved their families $2.25 million in this last couple of years. So this is really an investment that we're making in the community, in our students, and ensuring that people that want to benefit from career education or transfer education can participate. I know that you're all aware of the bachelor's degree. We are one of 15 colleges in the state that are able to offer a bachelor's degree at a community college, and we are doing biomanufacturing because it meets the needs of our community. It builds on the strength that we have in biotech, and it meets a workforce need that is in our community that's very prominent in San Diego County. So we have our first class of juniors that's taking finals right now, and we expect them all to go on to the senior-level courses. We've accepted the junior-level class. They will enter in the fall. There's about 25 students in each of those cohorts. And our first bachelor's degree students from Miracosta will be graduating a year from now, and they will have paid about $10,000 for their entire four-year degree. So for those of you that are parents... So there's parents that have paid college tuition. That's less than a year at a public university. So we're very proud of making quality, affordable education available right here within our community. We also offer through a partnership with another university four other bachelor's degrees that you can finish right on our campus. So this is for students that are placebound. Even with transfer agreements, sometimes you get deferred up to Humboldt State or somewhere, and our students sometimes can't leave their families and leave their jobs to move that far away. And so we've created four other bachelor's degrees through partnership that you can finish on our campus, and those are in high-demand fields like computer science and cybersecurity, business administration, child development, and last but not least, nursing, which is a critical shortage for us in the nation. So last points I want to make, we have a commitment to our veterans, and in fact, I know that our trustees are going to go back to a veterans' graduation celebration after this meeting is over. We have over 3,000 active-duty military, their dependents, and veterans that are enrolled at Miracosta College, and that number is just increasing tremendously. We also have secured a federal grant from the Small Business Administration to offer transitioning veterans free services to help them kind of take that discipline and turn it into an entrepreneurial spirit, so that we help them start businesses and expand businesses. And all of the services are free to veterans, so we're very proud of what we do for that community as well. And exactly 48 hours from now, we'll be graduating students at our 5 o'clock ceremony, so don't be anywhere near Miracosta College at 5:00 p.m. on Friday or even 7:00 p.m. on Friday evening. We expect to hand out about 3,000, just under 3,300 degrees and certificates to students that will be graduating from us and either going right to work or going to transfer to university. So again, it's a privilege to be in this community. It's a privilege to serve the residents of Oceanside, and we look forward to being here for 85 more years. So thank you very much. Appreciate it.
I have a question.
Councilmember Kern.
Yes, sir.
You mentioned the Gear Up program, and I remember when that first started, I actually went and talked to those eighth graders at Jefferson. I feel old now that they've actually already entered college to do that. Was that a one-time program that followed these kids along? And it seems like it was very successful to, for these kids especially. Is there some chance of repeating that, or is there going to be an ongoing program about that?
We have applied for renewed funding. It's rare that programs get funded for more than once. I think they want us to invest in the program and then have you sustain that. So we're looking at ways with Oceanside Unified to do the essential pieces. So dual enrollment, having students take high school credit was a big part of that. Having counselors in the schools was an important part. Our counselors in the schools was an important part of that as well. So we're looking for ways to continue to do the essential work that we think resulted in these outcomes, so that we can keep that partnership moving.
Yeah, because it was a good program, especially at Jefferson Middle School where they have a lot of underserved students that weren't even thinking about college, you know. So to actually get them thinking about college from the eighth grade and it carried through, and it sounded like a very successful program.
Right. Thank you. Anything else?
All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
At this time, I'd like to have Homer Post come on up to talk about Older Americans Month.
How much older?
Mr. Mayor, City Council, and extinguished guest here at the Oceanside, City of Oceanside meeting. I'm involved and engaged in a program that is involving itself with energizing individuals from the ages of 55-plus. That means those of you that have already contacted your CAPRA, your other retirement programs, what are you going to do when it's time for you to retire? We have two centers here in Oceanside that allow you to have a continuum. That continuum allows you to stay alive. It allows you to be involved, not only in your community as volunteers, and one of the areas that you could truly volunteer in is our home-delivered meals, our nutrition program, volunteer as a transportation provider, because once they take your keys from you as a senior, guess what? You're homebound. So I am so glad and privileged to be a part of an effort here in Oceanside as it relates to senior citizen development and continuation. We are, in this age, somewhere of about 50,000 meals are being served to the community. We have more than 1,300 transportation rides. Our partnership with Miracosta College allows us to have a continuum, so you have continuous education and stay engaged. We are now reaching out to the Girl Scouts of America so we can give them honor with respect to their Gold Award, which is one of the highest awards you can get in the Girl Scouts of America. And we want to put that into a vein of what we call intergenerational, where you're bringing the two generations together, those of the elderly and those that are young. Those that are young have the energy. Those that are elderly have the savvy. So with that, I accept this proclamation here, and I want to thank all of you for bringing me here from Farmington, New Mexico, and I will do everything in my power to make sure that the senior program here is going to expand and be viable, and not only that, be self-sustaining. Are there any questions?
Mullen?
Thank you. The City Council met in closed session earlier this afternoon to discuss Item 1 on the agenda, Conference of Labor Negotiator, involving the Oceanside Firefighters Association, the Western Council of Engineers, and the management employees of the City of Oceanside. There's no reportable action under the Brown Act on those items. Council also met on Item 2A1, Conference of Legal Counsel in an existing litigation matter involving the workers' compensation case of Gabriel Jimenez versus City of Oceanside. The Council did discuss and give direction on that item, but there is no reportable action at this time.
Next, we have consent calendar, Items 4 through 11, and Item Number 9, Deputy Mayor Lowry has to recuse himself on that item. Move approval?
Second.
Please vote.
Motion approved 5-0, reflecting a 4-0 vote for Item Number 9, with Lowry recused. Next, we have Item Number 12, is a quarterly budget update and approval of budget adjustments and transfers.
Jane McPherson, Financial Services Director. I'm here tonight to present the third quarter ending March 31st financial results and present budget adjustments and transfers. Staff submits the preliminary third quarter financial status report and recommends approval of the third quarter budget adjustments and transfers. Here, we show the revenues through the third quarter compared to budget. Currently, we're at 66% of amended budget. We're on target to meet the year-end budget goals. We received most of our revenue, especially in property taxes, in May this year and also in December. So the year-end results will bring up that gap so that it's closer to what we expected. A couple items that are key revenues. Property tax is 62% of budget, however, it's up 11% as compared to last year's same time. Sales tax is at 61% of the budget, but we're showing that it's up 2% compared to last year's same time. Transient occupancy tax, better known as TOT, is 69% of budget, and we're actually up 17% as compared to the same time last year. Here are the expenditures. Currently, we are at 72% of budget, and we're in line with budget. There aren't any departments that we have any concerns with not meeting or exceeding their budgets at this time. Recommendation: Staff recommends City Council approval of the third quarter budget adjustments and transfers. I'm available for any questions. Thank you.
Councilmember Sanchez.
I'm going to go ahead and move approval.
Second.
Please vote.
Motion approved 5-0. Next, we'll do off-agenda comments. Our first speakers, Arlene Hammer Schmidt, followed by Kristin Johnson.
Honorable Mayor, City Council members, city officials, and everyone attending this evening. My name is Arlene Hammer Schmidt. I live in Ivy Road on Fire Mountain. I'm a 34-year resident of Oceanside. Tonight, we are proud to introduce the new Oceanside Local Chapter of Represent Us. Represent Us is a national, nonpartisan, grassroots, anti-corruption organization. You can find information about Represent Us online. Currently, the national group has over 700,000 members and 5,000 volunteers nationwide. Because our group's scope of work is concentrated in Oceanside City, we will be referring to ourselves as Transparent Oceanside Governance Specialists, or TOGS, as we fulfill our vision and our mission statement, which is there, and those of Represent Us. As a newly formed chapter, we look forward to working with all city officials and all residents, including all of the neighborhood groups in Oceanside, and we have a bunch of them. Our five goals, which are: A transparent government, reforming elections and appointments, campaign finances, ethics, and planning, will require many hands and minds, so we welcome all interested parties to join us. By identifying and analyzing any antiquated policies, procedures, and unfair practices, both in business and politics, we expect to make our city more responsive to its residents. Our investigation of new processes and procedures to achieve total transparency and accomplish our goals may indicate possible improprieties, corruption, or ethics issues at some city government or business levels. And if any such issues are identified, we would look forward to all appointed and elected officials now and in the future embracing and helping correct such issues for the good of the city and the residents of Oceanside. We look forward to discussing our thoughts and plans with Mayor Weiss in the near future. Thank you for your time. And attendees, thank you for your interest. We will have sign-up sheets in the lobby for those of you who are here tonight and interested. Thanks, everybody.
Hi. My name is Honorable Mayor and City Councilperson. My name is Kristin Johnson, and I'm part of the same organization. My interest right now, one of my goals, or our goals, is having about ranked choice voting. I think Oceanside voters are entitled to have their vote counted on Election Day. A lot of people, especially in my neighborhood, senior citizens, have to take the bus up to the polls, and it involves quite a ordeal. And so that once they do that, it would be nice if their vote counted. In the sad case of the 2016 election, where the incumbent treasurer, Gary Ernst, passed away before the election, the 27,766 voters that cast their vote for him were ignored. I mean, that cast their vote for Nadine Scott were ignored. Mr. Ernst had just 29,622 votes, just a difference of 3%. Honoring the ranked choice principle was the fair option. Once again, it feels like the City Council ignored the will of their constituents. The other good point about it is it avoids having to, had the council not been able to agree on an appointee, it avoids having another election. Thank you.
Our next two speakers are Michael Odegaard and Cindy Rocco.
Honorable Mayor and Councilmembers, my name is Michael Odegaard, with Vine Street Apartments, Transparent Oceanside Governance, and the Canyon Park Neighborhood Association, an area lead for Next Door Canyon Park. I'd like to review 13 recommendations preliminarily to help increase our transparency and planning department reforms, namely, a corruption-free reform that requires 100% transparency and full disclosure of City Oceanside staff, officials, and commissioners, as well as all transactional parties, to avoid even the appearance of any conflict of interest. For the mayor, sitting council members, and sitting planning commission members and candidates of those positions, we want to see published on the city website exactly who has loaned them money, who pays them any salary or any remuneration, or has donated to their campaign funds, instead of having to go to various sites to find this information. The city will not transfer its responsibility to notify affected residents of any proposed land planning action to the petitioner. We also request full disclosure of all natural persons involved in transactions, which means disclosure requirements that are uniform between elected officials and other City of Oceanside Department workers and project applicants. Speakers at public meetings disclose not only their identity, but also their employment relationships. Financial disclosures requirement for official public services and contractors shall be equal and include disclosure of financial interests extending two years prior to the application for office or discretionary permission. Names of all owners, managers, beneficiaries of business entities, and their heirs must be disclosed. The public shall be given adequate time to review environmental documents before the city will conduct a hearing on their acceptance. The public should not be required to read more than 50 pages of documents per day. If the city attorney must certify any public officer not having a conflict of interest on a matter, then he must publish conclusive documentary proof that no conflict of interest exists prior to the public hearing. Unless conclusive documentary proof of a suspected conflict of interest is certified and published, then recusal shall be mandatory. Planning department reforms especially consistency in their interpretation of rules and requirements in a matter that is fair and equal to residents. The Development Services Department shall be renamed the Neighborhood Development Services Department in order to reflect priority on serving existing home and property owners and the Office of Neighborhood Involvement, staff to facilitate grassroots neighborhood associations. We suggest also redesigning the City of Oceanside website per the City of Carlsbad standards that uses real-world language. Website shall facilitate quicker and easier access to all relevant documents on issues coming up to vote, so that meaningful input may be provided before the train leaves the station. I just have two more.
Mr. Odegaard, we can read them. You're out of time. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, Cindy Rocco, Honorable Mayor, Council. I also am a part of Transparent Oceanside Governance and Represent Us. Our vision is governance that you can trust, and we want to increase the public trust and eliminate special interests and level the playing field and give people more of a voice. We want to work with the city and citizens on campaign reform and establish a local campaign ordinance that enhances our representation. Every politician vows that campaign contributions do not influence legislature, policy, project decisions, et cetera. We hear you, but a growing number of us do not trust our government. And you can see that by the audience tonight, and more and more people being engaged in projects and having more awareness of what's going on. I firmly believe that all people in this council are fundamentally all good, yet it's our nature to show appreciation and thanks when someone helps us. It's human nature. We may not intend reciprocity, but there is the appearance and perception that money influences votes, and that city-elected officials work for developers, unions, et cetera, and not for the tax-paying residents. The Center of Responsive Politics reported candidates with the most financial support generally win. In 2016, in the House, 96%, the ones with the biggest money, 96% won, and in the Senate, Research shows incumbents win approximately 70% of the time, and candidates with the largest So again, this is part of the war chest. Well, one of the things we want to do is have, work with the city and citizens and try to come up with an ordinance where it limits campaign contributions to individuals. For example, a maximum of 200 For example, a maximum of $250, which is what Encinitas has, and $200, which Delmar has, and work out the details on that. And, oh, sorry. Oh, and this is just to highlight, there's no one in particular that we're showing, but this is just a snapshot from this year of campaign contributions. The amounts, the developers' name, and these are all projects that have been done in the City of Oceanside. So it clearly shows that money will speak, and we want to get our representation. So we appreciate your time and listening. And anybody that wants to be a part of the team, we will be signing up after the meeting. Thank you.
Our next two speakers are Joe Hill, followed by Thelma Mubawi.
Honorable Mayor, Councilmembers, city officials, and all of tonight's meeting attendees, my name is Joe Hill, Rutgers Place, Miracosta Estates, and I'm a 19-year resident of Oceanside, and I'm fired up about ethics. Wouldn't you think a city the size of Oceanside would have an established code of ethics and conduct for the city council and all elected and appointed officials? We actually do have one city commission out of 15 that has a written code of ethics document. It's brief, but covers their responsibilities. That would be the Planning Commission. Thank you, Jonathan Jeff, and your entire staff for your efforts to follow the principles of the code. Maybe the city council, who you report to, should seriously consider a similar type code, as there seems to be a pattern of overriding Planning Commission's recommendations. If a code of conduct was in place, we would expect the following from all of our city officials. All city officials would conduct all city business in an above-board, transparent, and ethical manner. These same officials would make decisions based on input from and output for the constituents of the city. These same officials would refuse to participate in any type of business or personal lobbying offers, incentives, donations, or contributions from developers or businesses that personally affect their decisions and negatively impact the citizens of any part of Oceanside. These same officials would not consistently ignore the constituents who elected them. And zone changes would not be happening just to accommodate a developer's project. Our Oceanside City Council needs to support the people and the residents, not the developers. I believe our citizens are tired of politics, as usual, and they are frustrated with elected and appointed officials who care more about pleasing their money donors than representing all of their constituents. Please stop selling us short in our neighborhoods and parks. Listen to and be open to accepting better ideas, instead of development anywhere and everywhere, just to pay for play and quid pro quo. So it's election time this year, and everyone is listening to candidates. Some are following the money. Some candidates aspiring to greater heights continue to get development money for past and present and future votes. As you see on the board and what Cindy previously said, this is what happened in Oceanside. Today, we are officially calling BS to a special excuse phrase that is used frequently in conversations about certain actions taken and donations given in our city. That phrase, and I quote, "is permissible conflict of interest." The 143-page FBPC document was never intended to be interpreted to promote corruption. Thank you very much.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. My name is Thelma Mubawi, and I'm here with the District Attorney's Office. My office is at the CARE Community Center in National City. CARE stands for Community Action Resource and Engagement. And I'm just going to go ahead and read you our vision, mission, and objective. So the vision of the CARE Center is meeting community needs to achieve full equity. The mission is building community partnerships to link resources by using a holistic, evidence-based approach to improve the well-being of all. And the objective of the CARE Center is to provide intervention and prevention services for the community in the community. And some of the services we offer: Service referrals based on need, which may include substance abuse treatment and counseling, housing assistance, mental health services, vocational training, veteran services, and more. As a crime prevention specialist for the District Attorney's Office, I am the representative of North County, and I'll be primarily focused in Oceanside, Vista, and Escondido. And essentially, I'm just here to learn the community and uncover what the needs of this community are in North County, and seeing what we can do to help, and seeing how those needs relate to crime. And I will be active in the community roundtables, coalitions, and collaboratives, and I look forward to partnering with you and partnering with this community. Thank you.
Our final two speakers are Jimmy Knott and Sylvia Spears.
Mayor, Councilmembers, Jimmy Knott, 127, Sherri Lane. I was asked to take and tell the public that we have a lot of family-friendly events this summer coming up. We have the concerts in the park, and they are not going to be in just one park, they're going to be all throughout the city. So I would take and consider, if you're in your neighborhood, to pay attention. We may be there. You're going to have over at Mans Buchanan, you're going to have over at Rancho Del Aro, you're going to have at South Oceanside Elementary, you're going to have all over the place, the different ones that'll be going on. Then, you're also going to have different types of different music, so please, attend. Next thing. Of course, on July 3rd, Oceanside's birthday, we have our fireworks event before everybody else. And that's going to be at the El Corazon site at Rancho Del Aro, and you'll probably see it most everywhere in the city. And you're also going to have movies, free movies, throughout the summer. Downlight Jr., Sale Amphitheater. And those are three movies that you're going to see there, all pretty recent. The Star Wars, The Last Jedi, and, I can't get that word out, and Me3, and Coco, which is an excellent movie, all throughout the summer. And finally, thank you, first time someone's helped me. Okay, and it's going to be the Oceanside Jazz Night throughout the summer for our seniors, dancing. And there is going to be a charge on this one, and you have to be age-appropriate, because wine and beer will be served along with hors d'oeuvres of $20. And that is being sponsored by, you can see all the different groups there, including the City of Oceanside. So we want to take and make sure that everybody is invited to take and participate this summer in all sorts of events. Of course, there is going to be the other programs with the Parks and Recs Department, as I was told, so please pay attention. And I will also take, and on a separate subject, is to take and please pay attention to the next speaker, because she has a lot to say about our seniors. And as you know, I've been a senior advocate for over 30 years. And it's very important that we pay attention to their nutrition needs. Thank you.
Good evening, Councilmembers and Mayor. My name is Sylvia Spears. I'm the Executive Director of the Oceanside Senior Citizens Association. We run the senior nutrition program in the City of Oceanside. I'm here today because we were informed that the city may not be renewing our property use agreement at the Country Club Senior Center, and that you may be going in a new direction. I'm hoping, by coming here today and sharing information with you, that you will continue to support the Oceanside Senior Citizens Association and renew or grant us another five-years property use agreement. In front of you is a report. There you go. In front of you is a report from the county database that every senior nutrition program uses. If you look on there, I've highlighted Oceanside programs, our home delivery program, our congregate program, and our transportation program. If you take a look at the home delivery meal service, we are number three in the county for serving homebound meals. Salvation Army is number one. They serve to Chula Vista, Alcoa Home, Lakeside, Santee, and some of Oceanside. Number two is serving seniors. They do Downtown and Lemon Grove, and then Oceanside is number three. Let's see, we have 130 seniors on our homebound delivery program. We have 383 active seniors on our congregate program. We have 32 clients on our transportation program. Our average senior is 74 years old, white, female, and lives alone. This program is important because the seniors that we serve are below poverty level to low income. We do have homebound seniors that sometimes our meal is the only meal they get for the day. Our drivers are sometimes the only human interact that they get for the day. I'd like to invite all the councilmembers and the mayor to come to the Country Club Senior Center and actually drive with one of our delivery trucks, and see who we serve, and see how much this program is needed. My business card is attached to the report that I gave you guys, so if you have any questions, feel free to call me or email me. And again, I hope that you guys reconsider in giving the Oceanside Senior Citizens Association another five-year property use agreement. Thank you.
No further public on this item.
Thank you.
Could we do 12?
Pardon? 12. Yes, we already had item number 12.
Number 13?
13.
Yes, item number 13, yes. Is introduction of an ordinance amending Chapter 35 of the Oceanside City Code to reduce the combined single limit insurance requirement from $1 million to $350,000.
Honorable Mayor, Members of the City Council, I'm Sherri Brown, the Financial Services Division Manager. The item before you, as you just explained, was to reduce the insurance requirements for taxicabs from $1 million down to $350,000. San Diego Metropolitan Transit Systems, or MTS, recently, in November, got a committee together and took a look at the insurance requirements. Their review and analysis is attached to your staff report. I'm not going to go through all of it right here, but their recommendation, they regulate taxicabs for eight cities in San Diego County, one of them being the City of San Diego. Their recommendation was to reduce the limit from $1 million to the $350,000. City of San Diego approved that reduction. MTS then took it to their Board of Directors, and they approved the reduction based on the analysis. Since that time, other cities, such as Oceanside, have been approached to take a look at the same reduction. In North County, both Escondido and San Marcos this last month have adopted reductions in theirs. The County of San Diego is going to be adopting one as well. Vista and Carlsbad are holding off. Last I spoke to them, there's another regulation for taxicabs that comes into effect in January of 2019. It regionalizes taxicab regulations, and so Carlsbad and Vista want to hold off on making any changes until they see what happens with that regionalization. So the proposal from staff is to reduce this insurance requirement from $1 million to $350,000, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Councilmember Sanchez.
Any public?
No public on this item.
Okay, I'm going to move to introduce the ordinance. I think this has to do with being able to compete with Uber and...
That is part of it, yes.
It's under different regulations. Okay, yes, thank you.
Motion and second, please vote.
Thank you. This is the introduction of an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Oceanside amending Chapter 35 of the Oceanside City Code by the amendment of Section 35.2 to reduce the insurance requirement.
Please vote.
Motion approved, 5-0.
19.
Yes, item number 19 is adoption of an ordinance amending Article 30, Section 3006 of the 1992 and Downtown Zoning Ordinance to establish revised accessory dwelling unit regulations conforming to the provisions of Government Code, Section 65852.2, as amended by SB 229 and AB 494.
Deputy Mayor Lowry.
I received a lot of comments from the public about this item. This is the hotel...
No, 19.
Not the hotel.
This is item number 19.
Gran flats. I love that item. This is the second reading of an item that we approved a couple of weeks ago, and this is just to come into compliance with state regulations. We're not changing anything, other than what we have to do to stay compliant with state regs. And I move that we approve. Thank you.
This is the introduction of an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Oceanside amending Article 20, Section 3006 of the 1992 and Downtown Zoning Ordinances to establish revised accessory dwelling unit regulations conforming to the provisions of Government Code, Section 65852.2.
Please vote.
Motion approved, 5-0. Yes, item number 20 is adoption of an ordinance for zone amendment to change the zoning designation of APN 152-320-37 from single-family residential to recreational commercial for a 99-room select-service hotel located on the north side of Oceanside Boulevard, between Vine Street and Clementine Street, Fairfield Inn and Suites, Oceanside Boulevard, applicant ABA Development LLC, appellant ABA Development LLC. We have quite a bit of public on this item. I don't have the exact number, but probably at least over a dozen. Okay, we'll begin.
We'll start them.
I'm sorry.
So we will start them, but at 6:00, we'll go to the public hearings.
Okay. Perfect. So each speaker's going to have two minutes to speak on this item. I'll call you up two at a time. First, we have Ms. Ikman-Wolff, followed by Robin Goodkind, and I do apologize for mispronouncing the first one. I apologize. Yeah, I believe it's, yeah.
Honorable Mayor, Councilmembers, constituency, I sent an email after the last meeting on this subject, and I'd like to read it because Chuck Lowry was the only one who had the courtesy to respond to my email. Your recent decision on this Fairfield Hotel is unacceptable, and now you just snuck in changing the zoning. In case you missed the obvious, the top of the hotel would be a distinct eyesore to the neighborhood, not to mention currently, well, when I wrote this, it was zoned for single-family dwellings. Now you guys just kind of snuck that in. As it stands now, a neighborhood which was once a very quiet area in which to live has now become riddled with home break-ins, people trying to get into parked cars, et cetera. In the meantime, your two-star monstrosity would only add to the crime in our area. Then we have the coyotes who live in the canyon between the 5 freeway and the homes, into whose privacy you want to intrude. These coyotes are predatory and are looking for food, our small pets. Our pets are family to us, and those who have become victims of the coyotes have left holes in our family dynamics. Add to that, our individual property values are also an issue. You are decreasing our property values with your decision, which will negatively affect us. My parents, Joanne Ann Altamorano, bought their dream home in 1960. Now a third generation of the family lives in the home. Their vision was that their hard work would and could be enjoyed by their descendants. You seem to want to ruin that dream, as well as the dreams of others who have moved into what was once a quiet, friendly neighborhood. Shame on all of you. My brother, Ronaldo Rene Altamorano, was a member of the Oceanside Planning Commission back in the 90s, and in those days, the city council listened to the Planning Commission.
Can you please wrap it up?
Okay, well, I'm going to say one last thing, and then I'm out of here. Jerry Kern, I know you're running. I've already casted my absentee ballot. Trust me, I did not vote for you.
Please finish up. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Robin Goodkind.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and Councilmembers. I'm Robin Goodkind, Loma Alta resident and small business owner. Thank you for giving the public another opportunity to voice our concerns about this hotel. With all due respect, you have made a bad project worse. I must have misunderstood Councilmember Fowler's request for a new traffic light in front of the hotel, because I thought Mr. Fowler wanted that new light to replace the U-turn at Ditmar Street, so that departing guests would not have to turn right, go up to Ditmar Street, turn around, go east, pass the hotel to get onto the freeway. I thought that was the whole point of your request. Now we have a new traffic light, so why do we still need the U-turn at Ditmar Street? Now we have two problems instead of just one. Now we have two problems instead of just one. Also, Mr. Fowler stated clearly that he wanted a signal without a pedestrian crosswalk that would be a left turn, demand-only signal for cars leaving the hotel. Now we get a full signal with a pedestrian crosswalk. Cars will come around that blind curve, speed down the hill at 50 miles per hour while pedestrians walk across the street. And yes, cars do go 50 miles per hour on that strip. I've driven it thousands of times. And if that's not bad enough, we will also still get the U-turn at Ditmar Street. Is this really the best that we can do for our city? I ask that you please vote tonight to continue this discussion at a later date, to give the public sufficient time to study and comment on new components that were added two weeks ago that were not part of the original notice to the public. I think that's a reasonable request. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Our next two speakers, our next two speakers are Bill Fisher and Kristen Johnson.
My name is Bill Fisher. I'm a 15-year resident of Oceanside. I live at 510 Estremos Court. I strongly oppose this project. I'll try to be short and sweet, as I hope the fate of this project will be. There's no visual enhancement here. This is simply an ugly structure. It looks like a bunker, a long rectangular bunker with three stories of windows punched into it. There are traffic issues, safety issues with the planned U-turn at Ditmar and Oceanside Boulevard. It's narrow. My car won't even make that, that U-turn. So there are return problems to access the I-5. I don't think those are solvable in that location. The, the terrain itself is inhospitable to the project plan. It's a steep, narrow wedge of land. There's probably going to have to be some blasting, and it's going to be an assault on the neighborhood that's adjacent to it. I think this is an ill-conceived project. I hope you will vote no against the zone amendment. Thank you.
Hello, Kristen Johnson again. Once again, the city is changing zoning, replacing what should be eight homes in the R1 district with a 99-room hotel and 99 parking spaces. Besides, it's a two-star hotel, and the developer is asking for a conditional use permit that allows 17-foot-tall retaining wall and a, a three-story hotel. I live right across the street, and I can tell you that when Fresh &amp; Easy went in, it reduced our noise level by 10 times. We don't even hear the freeway anymore because Oceanside Boulevard and the trains is so loud. It, I urge you not to go ahead with this. What Oceanside and the neighbors getting, we're getting a sidewalk that no one walks up that side because it's too dangerous because of the traffic. And we're getting TOT taxes that after five years will be, I think they said $5 million. That will replace, the TOT taxes have been going to affordable housing, and $5 million will buy, right now, about 10 houses. Five years from now, probably five houses. And we're losing eight houses for that. The jobs that come, they're going to have 20 jobs, minimum wage, most of them. The people that work there cannot even afford to pay for housing in Oceanside. It's a lose-lose for everyone. Thank you.
Our next two speakers are John Bickerton and Sally Bickerton.
John Bickerton, South Clementine Street, good evening. Again, I urge you to vote no on this project. Mr. Weiss, Mr. Kern, Mr. Fowler, change your vote. This parcel's zoned RS. The owner developer has always known this and should have looked for an appropriate location that did not impact the adjacent residential neighborhoods. The reason this parcel was zoned RS was to prevent this exact situation from occurring. This project violates sections of the residential and commercial zoning ordinance by, one, creating excessive noise, population density, traffic congestion, and other adverse environmental effects, Section 1010B. Two, negatively impacting the adjacent residential district, Section 1110D, having inharmonious appearance and effects with the character of the surrounding single-family homes, 1110E, violating the CR designation by not having easy access to freeways. No EIR was done and no public input was allowed on adding a traffic signal, and your staff advised against it. What's the impact of this decision? This last-minute addition should never have been allowed. Mr. Fowler, you stated that you would not support this project with the U-turn at Ditmar, yet you seconded the motion by Mr. Kern and voted to approve the project with the addition of a left turn and a U-turn at Ditmar. The only way to resolve this is vote no. Deny the project, support and enforce the current zoning, protect our schools, single-family neighborhoods, and the safety of our residents and visitors. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor and councilmembers and staff. My name is Sally Bickerton, and I'm a homeowner on South Clementine Street. Thank you, councilmembers that did vote no on this project two weeks ago. And I'm here tonight to hopefully help the other three councilmembers and, and mayor into changing their vote to no on a zoning change on this parcel. Our zoning ordinance states that we need to protect our residential neighborhoods from excessive noise and traffic congestion, and that construction should be harmonious with surrounding homes. This would not be. Changing the zoning disregards this. Both the homes up the hill from the proposed development, as well as those across Oceanside Boulevard, will certainly suffer. The property owner purchased this property, knowing it was designated single-family dwellings, and should not be allowed a variance or conditional use permit. No spot zoning changes should be allowed. We need to keep all the residential zoning we currently have as we keep hearing about this housing crisis. I encourage all of you to do what is best for our neighborhood, as well as what's best for the entire city. Please start listening to your constituents and set a precedent to do so in the future. Thank you.
We have time for one more speaker. Our last speaker is Sean Sullivan.
Good afternoon, Mayor, councilmembers. My name is Sean Sullivan. I live at 1114 Eucalyptus Street, which is above this project. Being that I truly believe that this is already a done deal, I just thought I'd come and give my last little statement here. Now, it seemed as though the majority and the reason for this approval was TOT taxes, because everything else seemed to be irrelevant. I believe there were several items that were brought up during that meeting that were actually, on the report, that were biased towards the approval of this project. The only thing I'm going to be mentioning now is the TOT. And with that, I just did a real quick study with your local travel agencies and all that kind of stuff on what the hotel prices are. Two-star hotel, the gentleman from Fairfield said between 100 and 200. Big spread. More like you can see on that, I looked at all the locals. The highest Fairfield, all the way down to San Diego is 109. So when you look at all the numbers, putting it together, it was overestimated after five years, up to $1 million. Okay? Even with things improving and getting better, a 32.5% increase over five years is pretty wishful thinking. The other thing that I just would like to bring up is the fact that, Jack Fowler, in your 2016 election, your number-one priority, enhance and preserve the quality of life for Oceanside residents. Jerry Kern, in your current supervisor, um, election, I'm running for supervisor to protect our quality of life and ensure North County receives the services they deserved. I don't think either of you truly believe that in this.
Thank you. So right now, we're going to move, just for clarification for the rest of the audience. So now we're going to move on to the public hearing items. So it's, since it's at 6 o'clock right now, so we still had 11 speakers for the hotel. We're going to come back to that item after we move through the public hearing items. So you still have the opportunity to speak. Just want to clarify that. Moving forward, would you like to move forward to the public hearing items, Mayor Weiss?
Yes.
First item is item number 14, which is adoption of resolutions approving the engineer's report, confirming the diagram and assessments, and order the assessments to be levied for fiscal year 2018, 2019 for the Oceanside Lighting District, assessment district number 2-1991, and approval of budget transfers in the amounts of $390,000 in gas tax funds and $5,000 in streetlight energy fees.
Open the public hearing and start with disclosures.
No contact.
Nothing.
No public contact.
All material has been provided to the council.
Honorable Mayor, Members of the City Council, good evening. Douglas Edow, real estate manager, City of Oceanside. Staff is recommending approval of this item. The Lighting and Landscape Act of 1972 requires city councils to annually renew the levying of assessments for the lighting district. The assessments for this upcoming fiscal year 1819 remain the same as in previous years. The level of service will also remain the same. I'll be happy to answer any questions you might have.
This is a public hearing item. Any members of the public who wish to speak on, speak on this specific item may come forward this time.
Close of public hearing. Councilmember Sanchez.
Move adoption.
Councilmember Kern.
Second.
Please vote.
Motion approved, 5-0. Item number 15, I believe Deputy Mayor Lowry has recused himself on this item.
Just with respect to the Peacock Hills, so if we could bifurcate this as we've done in the past, where we take all the elements with the exception of Peacock. I guess you could take, yeah, all of them with the exception of Peacock Hills. Then we'll do Peacock Hills, and Deputy Mayor Lowry will recuse himself.
Great. I'll read through it then. Adoption of resolutions confirming the diagrams and assessments for fiscal year 2018, 2019 for the city's landscape maintenance districts, Delore Hills, Douglas Park, Kwahomi Ridge, Marlato Highlands, Mission Meadows, Rancho Hermosa, Santa Fe, Mesa, Sunburst Homes, Sunset Hills, Vista del Rio, and ordering the assessments to be levied for the 2018, 2019 fiscal year.
Open the public hearing and start with disclosures.
No contact.
No disclosure.
No contact.
No public contact.
Staff only.
All material has been provided to the council.
Honorable Mayor, Members of the City Council, Douglas Edow, real estate manager, City of Oceanside, good evening again. Staff is again recommending this item. The Landscape and Lighting Act of 1972 also requires the city council to annually approve the levying of assessments for its landscape maintenance assessment districts. The assessments will remain the same as in prior years, except for those four landscape maintenance assessment districts that have a built-in CPI increase. I'll be happy to answer any questions you might have.
This is a public hearing item. Any members of the public who wish to speak on this specific item may come forward this time.
We'll close the public hearing. Councilmember Sanchez.
Move adoption.
Second.
So that would be with all of them, with the exception of Peacock Hills, correct?
Correct.
Please vote.
Motion approved, 5-0.
Councilmember Sanchez.
So this, we have to open a public hearing again for this one. So this is going to be adoption of resolutions confirming the diagrams and assessments for Peacock Hills.
Councilmember Sanchez.
No public contact.
No contact.
Oh, okay, we have to do disclosures again? This is staff only.
Move adoption.
Second.
No public.
Please vote.
Motion approved, 4-0, Lowry abstain. Item number 16 is adoption of resolutions establishing regulatory fees and application format for commercial medical cannabis facilities, and approving an application for authorization to access state and federal-level summary criminal history information for employment, volunteers, and contractors, licensing, or certification purposes. To open the public hearing.
Open the public hearing and start with disclosures.
Staff.
Staff.
Staff. Sorry, staff.
Staff.
Staff and public.
All material has been provided to the council.
Honorable Mayor and councilmembers, Jane McPherson, Financial Services Director. I'm here to, for the adoption of resolutions establishing regulatory fees and application format for medical cannabis facilities and applicant background checks. Staff recommends that the city council adopt resolutions establishing regulatory fees and application format for commercial medical cannabis facilities, and approving an application for authorization to access state and federal-level summary criminal history information for employment, volunteers, and contracts licensing or certification purposes. Staff further recommends that the city council authorize staff to make non-substantive modifications to the application forms and procedures as necessary to facilitate implementation. Background. On March 28th, 2018, city council introduced an ordinance amending the Oceanside zoning ordinance in Chapter 7, Article 13 of the Oceanside City Code. The purpose of the amendment was to update regulations concerning commercial medical cannabis uses and allow the establishment and operation of specified commercial medical cannabis facilities only in designated zoning districts, subject to conditions and limitations. The City Code, Chapter 7, Article 13 amendment, set forth the criteria and procedures for permits and licenses necessary to establish and operate commercial medical cannabis facilities with the, with the city of Oceanside. On April 11th, 2018, the city council adopted an ordinance amending the Oceanside Comprehensive Zoning Ordinance in Chapter 7, Article 13 of the Oceanside City, City Code to update regulations concerning commercial medical cannabis uses and allow the establishment and operation of commercial medical cannabis facilities only in designated zoning districts, subject to conditions and limitations. I guess I should advance that. As directed at the council's April 11th, 2018 meeting, a council workshop will be held on June 20th, 2018 to discuss the 1,000-foot setback in the one-unit-per-legal-lot limitations currently included in the ordinance, and to receive a report from the Oceanside Police Department regarding potential impacts of medical cannabis dispensaries. To ensure compliance with the regulation and development of fees, the city contracted with HDL companies to provide subject matter expertise, technical support, develop, they were asked to develop an application process and establish cost recovery fees for the establishment of and operation of specified commercial medical cannabis facilities. The cost recovery fees calculation considered the fully burdened hourly rate of staff, the average amount of time to process, and estimated number of applicants. As you can see on this slide, there are four phases, which is the process the applicant will go through, and they pay as they go. will go through, and they pay as they go these fees. In addition, there are background review fees, live scan fees, and then the zoning and uphill fee. Medical cannabis facilities will require a conditional use permit as well, or administrative conditional use permit, as well as any other development permits required for site improvements. Fees for the CUP and the ACUP are already established and can be found on the city's The application process to operate a medical cannabis facility, which is also called a local license, will open on Monday, June twenty-fifth, twenty eighteen. Final applications are to be submitted by four P.M. on Friday, August thirty-first, in order to be considered for the issuance of the local license. The fiscal impact. The amount of fee revenue collected will be used to offset staff costs related to the application and regulation of commercial medical cannabis facilities. Recommendation. Staff recommends that the City Council adopt resolutions establishing regulatory fees and application format for commercial medical cannabis facilities and approving an application for authorization to access state and federal-level summary criminal history information for employment, volunteers, and contractors licensing or certification purposes. Staff further recommends that the City Council authorize staff to modify the application forms and procedures to facilitate implementation. With that, I'm available for questions.
Great, we'll move forward to the public at this time. So I'm gonna call forward the speakers who have turned in their slips, and then we'll move forward with anyone who has not turned in slips for this item. Our first two speakers are Joel Weisberger, followed by Mike Milano.
Good evening. My name's Joel Weisberger. I'm here this evening representing the San Diego County Farm Bureau. I'm here to discuss a few, to address a few issues that I found on the fee schedule and application process. The first thing I'd like to address is the time window. As it's written, there's a two-month application window for a cannabis business license. Two months is a pretty short amount of time. These business licenses should be treated like a regular business license or a building permit, in which you can walk into the city office at any time and apply for either one anytime. Cannabis business licenses should be no different. The two-month window doesn't seem to make sense and would put undue burden on city staff. The second thing I'd like to address in the application process is the proof of capitalization clause. As it stands now, you'd be required to show that you had all of the money required for your full build-out and three months of operation before being issued an application. As it stands now, a twenty-two-thousand-square-foot cultivation facility would cost upwards of two million dollars. There's not a single person in the Morro Hills area that has two million dollars laying around, not even the Malanos or Jason Mraz. Most of the facilities will need to seek out venture capitalists for funding because traditional banks cannot lend to cannabis businesses, and every venture capitalist, venture capital company I've contacted requires the licenses first in order to issue funding. So the proof of capitalization requirement seems pretty prohibitive. The third thing I'd like to address is the clause that says the city manager can effectively veto, veto any application that they deem, if they deem that issuing that license would cause a public nuisance or reduce property value. This seems to be very arbitrary and redundant, considering that the applicant also has to obtain a conditional use permit, and the whole purpose of the conditional use permit is to run through that process and make sure that you're not creating a public nuisance. And finally, I'd like to address, there's a clause that cannabis businesses will be considered a regulated use. As it stands now, all regulated uses maintain a thousand-foot setback from other regulated uses unless it gets a variance from the city. But as it's stated now, cannabis businesses are ineligible for that variance. So for an example, a payday loan place is considered a regulated use, and if the only available property for, say, a processor or manufacturer was next to a payday loan place, they would not be able to even apply for a variance to be able to get into that building. So, thank you very much. I hope you consider the things that I've said tonight. Thank you.
Good evening. Mike Milano, Oceanside resident. I'm not gonna say the exact same thing he just said, because that's what I was gonna say. Didn't know we were gonna be called up sequentially, so I'll spare you guys the time, but just some of those things are a little bit tough to comply with. Again, you know, I have financing lined up, but I don't have money in my accounts because they wanna see a permit before they transfer the funds. The other issue is, maybe we're misunderstanding that two-month window. If we are, apologize, that it's like, put your application in, if you don't get it in that window, you're out for good. So maybe some clarity on that would be helpful for us. Thank you, guys.
Our next two speakers, our next two speakers are Amber Newman and John Byram.
Amber Newman, I'm actually here to speak directly to the application window. Basically, two months to submit an overcomplicated application based on an ordinance that was deemed to be flawed on the very same night it was passed. A workshop to discuss those flaws will be on June twentieth. You know, if the ordinance stays the same, it is what it is, and the estate farmers in Morro Hills will have to negotiate amongst themselves to see who gets to apply and who gets left out. But if there are fixes that are agreed to, they will still need council approval to take effect, and here's where it really gets tricky, and this is where we really need to pay attention to the timeline. June twentieth is the last council meeting for the summer, so the first date council could vote on any workshop revisions would be August ninth, eighth, I'm sorry. If that passed, they would need to be reaffirmed with a second vote at the next council meeting on August twenty-second. If that passes, for the second time, the revisions would then take effect thirty days later, which would be September twenty-second, and the application window closes on August thirty-first. They say the window may be extended or reopened, but staff did fail to lay out conditions and processes for which that may happen, so honestly, it's not something I would count on. In the meantime, interested parties could, if prepared, start prepping the application, hoping for the best, but there are caveats to that, too. Seven weeks is a long time for our council members to change their minds, and the application is no cheap endeavor. The three-year pro forma alone can reach upwards of a thousand dollars when completed by an industry knowledgeable accountant, and this is money that the applicants will not get back if the much-needed fixes are denied when all is said and done. Even if everything goes well and the problems are resolved, it's unclear whether or not the city will accept applications based on a pending ordinance in good faith. Regardless of how potential applicants may choose to proceed, it's probably most critical that everyone understands that the city reserves the right to deny any and all licenses with or without cause or reason at any way, all the way right up to the final phase, and all of those fees that will have been paid along the way are non-refundable. In response, eleven days ago, a voter initiative was filed in Oceanside to finally bring safe access to North County and added revenue to our city. We encourage everyone to support this initiative and sign the petition as soon as they are available. Thank you.
My name's John Byram, Mayor and Council. I'm Prevention Specialist with North Coastal Prevention Coalition. I'd like to share a recent story from the Union Tribune regarding the impact of marijuana cultivation in the city of Carpinteria in Santa Barbara County. According to the article, there are a large number of licenses, but most of them are for small mixed-light facilities, which are essentially means greenhouses. Only about two hundred acres in the county farmland is devoted to marijuana compared to tens of thousands of acres devoted to flowers and produce. I will assume that the decision-makers believe that they would have little impact on the residents' quality of life, just like you believe you're permitting farmers and business ventures to make a profit on marijuana that will have little impact on the residents of Oceanside. But the residents in Carpinteria now say a thick skunk-like odor settles over the valley in the evening, and they are stuffing their pillows under their doors and closing their windows. In addition, the state regulations are still not fully implemented, and temporary licenses have been granted, and an additional extension has given operators even more time to comply with the rules. NCPC supports the police chief recommendations that more time be given to evaluate concerns, issues, problems from other cities before permitting marijuana businesses. Waiting until the state has figured out how to issue permanent licenses and regulate compliance would seem a wise choice.
Our next two speakers are Damian Johnson and Becky Brundage.
I've had the opportunity to share my grave concerns for Oceanside regarding the commercialization and normalization of marijuana. As you look at regulatory fees and application format for marijuana facilities tonight, I would like to share some thoughts and questions and recommendations. I had suggested and thought that there was gonna be a comprehensive financial impact study so that we have a thorough understanding of the financial, staff time, and resources, and the cost to surrounding businesses and residences. Marijuana businesses, whether it is sales, cultivation, or manufacturing, require an inordinate amount of city resources to process, permit, examine, inventory, and enforce so that citizens and neighborhoods are protected from loitering, robberies, assaults, mismanagement of product and money, stealing, et cetera, and diversion to those under twenty-one. I think the suggested fees are very low, based on my professional experience. The background reveal alone would cost considerably more than the suggested three hundred dollars. I understand that the applicant is supposed to submit an air quality plan, however, I would recommend that there also be a climate action plan checkoff list, like San Diego requires, that is based on the CEQA requirements that includes such concerns as energy efficiencies and water runoff containment. Is the city aware of how energy-intensive indoor cultivation facilities are? Takes a tremendous amount of electricity to run the lights twenty-four-seven. And finally, you should not proceed without a taxing mechanism in place, because even if, and it's a big if, you should receive tax money from these enterprises, it will never compensate for the expenses to your law enforcement or city staff, and most importantly, the cost to the parents of Oceanside. I don't think the youth and families of Oceanside are winners in this deal. Thank you.
My name's Becky Brundage, and I have six children, and it's a difficult time to be away from them, but I feel like this is an important topic that needs to be addressed. I need to share our concerns, because we don't want anything, we don't have anything to gain from marijuana businesses and everything to use in quality of life, normalization, and commercialization of marijuana in Oceanside. I wonder if you realize how much your decision to facilitate bringing marijuana businesses, retail stores, cultivation, manufacturing to Oceanside affect how we feel about Oceanside and its leaders, especially since Prop sixty-four was about personal use, possession, and cultivation of six plants, and absolutely not about establishment of pot businesses. That is a city choice. We wonder why Oceanside is promoting pot businesses when San Marcos, Escondido, Poway, Carlsbad are not. In fact, seventy to seventy-five percent of cities in California are not setting up these businesses. The only people served by pot businesses are pot profiteers. I notice on the staff report that the city's requirements for marijuana businesses does not address the city's expectations regarding advertising. Have you seen the large billboards in San Diego? They are blatantly in the face of our youth every day. Regarding the manufacturing of marijuana products, I am concerned that the application process does not clearly describe the expectations that the city has about the pollution remedies that comes with the manufacturing of marijuana products, especially containment and disposal of contaminated water waste. How will the city know if the manufacturing site pollutes the land and waterways nearby? I noticed that the fee analysis on page two of the staff report does not include the staff costs to answer these questions, or to monitor the facilities, or do enforcement, either code or law enforcement, as the facilities are set up. Fees should include initial and ongoing inspections. A significant part of the manufactured marijuana products are food products. On page six of the state regulation document, it states the expectation that there will be an employee that is knowledgeable about safe manufacturing, processing, packaging, or holding of food. I would hope that requirement would be included in city's Phase Two of the evaluation and selection process under the labor and employment plan. Marijuana manufacturing produces a terrible odor. I notice that applicants will need to supply an air quality plan, however, what will be the process where residents and nearby businesses next door to the proposed manufacturing site seek recourse? Thank you.
Our next two speakers are Katie Papanyak and Kelly McCormick.
I'm Katie Papanyak. I have, my work in Oceanside has been to assist individuals to become stable, self-sufficient. They've been in sober living, they've been foster youth, they've been pregnant and parenting teens, they've been veterans, gang members, in court school, you name it. I am concerned about the folks I've worked with, because I don't think this pot shop idea is a good idea. Safety is my concern, especially when you heard from fire and police here that it wasn't a good idea, you're still going, going for it. I think many of the speakers have talked about things that have not been taken into the staff report, like the extra time for someone to monitor all the little side issues, but what I keep hearing about is extra paramedics and extra visits to the E.R. room and extra police visits, fire visits. All that costs the city money, so I am concerned about the cost as well. It is a big-money industry. I hear these people talking about needing to raise money. Many of the people backing the marijuana industry don't even live in our state. They are, I think they have plenty of money, and I heard at the planning commission here great hopes of all the money you're gonna earn from this big-time industry. So I would, I am very concerned that the fees are very low, and I think the fees should be higher, because if you're gonna make all this money and you're gonna get all these taxes from these folks, this, this industry, we all know, is big money. The safety concerns about the smell, but my also, all of us now on TV are seeing the tobacco ads. How many years did it take for us to believe that tobacco is harmless? And there is some harm in marijuana as well. I'd say slow down, there is way too much that you don't know, and today I ran across what Winston Churchill says. He says, "An appeaser is one who feeds a crocodile, hoping it will eat him last." Hope it doesn't eat ya.
Good evening. I'm Kelly McCormick, and if you read up on the experiences of other cities, you'll see that in most cases, the fees being collected are less than enough to pay for the increased demands on city services, including forensic bookkeeping, to ensure that you're being paid what you're owed, especially critical when dealing with a cash-only business. Demands on the police department due to the risk of heightened, risk of robberies, burglaries, and loitering around these facilities. As long as track and trace is still nonexistent, there's the possibility of product ending up in the black market, where there's a higher profit margin. There's the issue of code enforcement. In San Diego, there are cases of manufacturing facilities making unpermitted changes to the roof and ductwork of buildings. I talked to a business owner in Miramesa who told me that the roof of their building now leaks because the neighboring pot manufacturer installed an unpermitted duct. He and other business owners in the building are pursuing legal action based on a number of complaints, including the strong odor. The same business owner told me that he has severe headaches caused by the fumes. The same business owner told me that he has severe headaches caused by the fumes. Another has received complaints from the client visiting his, clients visiting his offices next door. In addition, they've told me there's the possibility their insurance rates could go up or even be canceled due to having a pot business as an adjoining neighbor, and their mortgage lender could cancel their loan for reasons including nuisance smell, fire danger, and substantial security risk. So who is going to look out for these Oceanside business owners when a pot manufacturing facility moves in next door? I've seen that some of these issues are mentioned in the proposed regulations, but how will you ensure that the regulations are being enforced? What will you do when violations are found? And where will the funding for enforcement come from? Another business owner in a different part of San Diego told me that he sold his property next to a pot manufacturing facility because after problems of, for years, and extended civil litigation, he could no longer afford to pay for lawyers. Not surprisingly, the pot business had much deeper pockets, and he was simply being outspent. I hope you'll also consider the environmental problems that other people here tonight have mentioned, including the University of California Davis study that found mold bacteria and other toxic contaminants in 20 out of 20 licensed pot shop products that they studied in Northern California, and pesticides. It's important to add that many pesticides become even more toxic when they are concentrated and/or heated, both common parts of the manufacturing process. For the sake of Oceanside's residents, business owners, and environment, I ask you to set the bar high, provide for strict enforcement with serious penalties for violators.
Our next speaker is Robin Goodkind.
Good evening again, Honorable, good evening again, Honorable Mayor and council members. I wasn't planning to speak on this issue, but I just wanted to reiterate a paragraph that was read previously by Amber Newman. If council makes constructive changes to the ordinance at its June 20th workshop, which hopefully you will, please pay attention to the timeline. June 20th is the last council meeting for the summer, so the first date council could vote on workshop revisions is August 8th. If passed, they would need to be reaffirmed with a second vote on August 22nd. If passed a second time, the revisions would take effect 30 days later on September 22nd. The application window closes on August 31st. Perhaps council could ask staff to address this procedural problem. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Dave Newman.
Dave Newman, Fire Mountain. Fentanyl was developed as a potent prescription painkiller, specifically prescribed to people with chronic pain who had developed a tolerance for other long-acting narcotic pain relievers or who are suffering pain at the end of life. This medicine is between 50 and 100 times more powerful than morphine, from which it is derived. Although the drug can be injected or taken orally, a common ingestion method is to take the drug transdermally through patches. Reports of fentanyl abuse, including mixing fentanyl into heroin, have been reported more across the United States since 2015. Coming into accidental contact with the sticky side of the patch can cause the drug to be released into the bloodstream. For people with little or no tolerance to narcotics, especially children, this can be life-threatening. In fact, per the Food and Drug Administration, using fentanyl patch as prescribed can, within 24 to 72 hours, lead to life-threatening breathing problems indicating an overdose. Among the more than 56,400 drug overdose deaths estimated in 2016, the sharpest increase occurred among deaths related to fentanyl and fentanyl analogs, with over 20,000 overdose deaths. You might be asking yourself, "Why am I talking about fentanyl and its potential life-threatening side effects and overdose deaths?" Because Oceanside is home to a company that manufactures fentanyl transdermal patches. They get to manufacture a narcotic that is considered to be 50 to 100 times more powerful than morphine without 1,000-foot buffers, special regulations, oversight, or the compliance we are seeing with medical marijuana. In fact, this company manufactures this life-threatening narcotic less than 1,000 feet of a daycare in town. Where is the outrage? Where are the teachers and government-funded groups saving our children? According to the DEA, no deaths from overdose of marijuana have been reported directly from their website. Recently, a voter initiative was filed in Oceanside that will lift the cannabis bans and finally bring safe access to the patients of Oceanside and North County. We ask that everyone support the initiative and sign the petition in the coming days. Thank you for your time.
This is a public hearing item. Any members of the public who haven't submitted a form in which to speak on this specific item may come forward at this time.
Good evening, treasurer, clerk, council, staff. What a travesty to even present such an ordinance. It's a joke. You dilly-dallied around to get votes, Jerry, on your little marijuana subcommittee. Hopefully, that's not going to work for you because you're not a nice guy. You didn't address the issues of cash control, putting it in safe industrial zones where you're not going to have noise and odor and problems like that. The incompetency of how you're handling this is so disappointing. You know, prohibition doesn't work. Not only do we have licensed fentanyl, we have licensed alcohol makers right next to everybody. There are thousands and thousands and thousands and thousands of more deaths than you can ever prove a marijuana person died, never. He quoted that. And yet, you're focusing on your reefer madness again. It's ridiculous. Prohibition never works. By doing this ridiculous job that you're presenting tonight, you're making the black market stronger, you're pushing it underground, you're causing more illegal sales, the city gets zero benefit out of it. I told you guys over a year ago, one of my very best friends is Monterey County Deputy Sheriff. They agreed to put a dispensary in a two-story building with a police resource center and the second story. Do you really think there's loitering and problems and thievery? No. You know why? Because those cops got smart. They saw the writing on the wall, the community saw the writing on the wall, and they know this is a powerful revenue maker. People need this medication. Recreation, I don't care. That's up to an individual, just like drinking beer or vodka. It's a legal substance in our state. So what you've done is really an embarrassment, and I'm ashamed that it even came forward. Thank you.
Judy Strang, Levanterra Sina. I've had the opportunity to represent PTAs and parent groups and their concerns, but I wanted to tell you about some of the things that I learned from a meeting that I attend every month. It's called CPC, Community Planners Committee. It's an organization of the 53 planning groups in the city of San Diego who meet together and discuss items of consistent and long-running concerns that they've had, that they have in common. And there's been some, over the years, some interesting things that I've noticed regarding marijuana businesses as the city of San Diego has had to deal with them. What we've noticed is how difficult it is for neighboring residences and neighboring businesses to compete with the profit-driven margin of marijuana businesses. And what happened in the case of one of the churches is they simply got bought out because their site location was so important to the marijuana businesses. I'm right now trying to help a group of parents who use a, it's a, it's going to be on the first floor of a building in Mission Valley, and this is a medical facility that's going to serve special-needs children. But unfortunately, right across the hallway, a metropot store wants to operate. And so these parents are trying to let the city know that this is inappropriate to them to have their children and their families coming and going as often as they do with the metropot store across the hallway. Well, they've hired a lawyer, and they've tried to bring it through the city process so far unsuccessfully, but what happens is what was referenced before, they literally ran out of money. The deep pockets of the pot shop owner across the hallway is prevailing. I also noticed with these folks that they have a, it's difficult for them to let the staff know at the city of San Diego regarding their concerns. And as I've looked at your regulations and your fee structure and your applicant process, I'm unclear at how folks who'd be stuck in the same situation could contact your staff and let them know that perhaps in their staff reports, there's missing information because that's what's happened to these parents down in the city of San Diego. And we've also noticed that there's a kind of bullying going on as they fight for these spaces, that often when there's appeal, the appeal's coming from competing pot businesses. So it creates this uncomfortable atmosphere for everyone who's watching it. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Barbara Gordon, and unfortunately, the normalization of marijuana has evolved into a full-scale marijuana commercialization. I hope the city will have the wisdom and the interest of its residents to not cave in to the money of big marijuana, and their interests can talk louder than the welfare of the city. I know that the police department is concerned with these businesses, and it's going to be their job to protect the city. It will be their office that will deal with the problems. The cost of public safety is increasing all the time, so why would we want to add another problematic businesses? Again, like we've heard with an all-cash, the pugnet smell, large amount of water use, robberies, armed guards, et cetera. Not only will law enforcement be impacted with these businesses, but the surrounding businesses will also suffer. Like we've heard tonight, the businesses in San Diego have had to deal with smell and with the cost of insurance going up. I think with all of these problems, other businesses might not want to locate next to these marijuana businesses, and that could affect property values. The decisions you make impact the citizens of Oceanside. The city must put the health and safety ahead of the smoke and mirrors of big marijuana interests. Again, the fees that the city set need to really reflect the real cost that these marijuana businesses will be to the city. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Bogart Bachman.
Can we get a reset on this thing? Okay, so weed. I've smoked a little weed. I've heard a lot of concern about people in favor and against it, and, you know, my whole concern is, you know, people can smoke weed probably because they want to and, you know, dealing with San Diego traffic and whatever, they need to. Dealing with some of you guys, they probably also need to as well. But, yeah, Jerome. So what I want to focus on is, why is this weed thing the issue? Like, we should be creating a place where we want to live. Now, I don't, I don't really like smoking weed, but we're just debating weed here. Like, let's just try to make this place someplace where we don't need to smoke weed. All right, thanks.
Seeing no one else, we'll close the public input portion.
Oh. One more.
For people who don't realize this, one of the things that the city council did when it approved the idea of allowing marijuana to be dispensed in the city of Oceanside was it limited to medical marijuana. And as someone who has been successful using medical marijuana to treat psoriasis and multiple sclerosis since 2007, I was very grateful that they were willing to allow the citizens of the city to have safe, local access. That's really important, and there are more people who are using marijuana successfully, medically, than will ever show up at these hearings. The same people show up and ask you to not help us so that you'll protect their children, yet they are not here demanding that you close 7-Elevens where it's easy for kids to shoplift alcohol. They're not demanding that you close the pharmacies that are providing these really dangerous drugs to people who leave them in their medicine cabinets when they're, where their kids then take them. They're worried about marijuana when in fact, prescription drugs have now been denominated as the leading cause of addiction in this country, not marijuana. So I think the city council acted responsibly by proving the concept that people in the city of Oceanside should have the choice of using marijuana as a medical product if that is what they choose to do. And I will tell you, my neurologist said, "No, no, don't do that." And I said, "The government took out a patent on this stuff in 1999. It says it's a neuroprotectant. It says it helps against autoimmune diseases. I'll bring you the patent." And then a year later, I went back, and she did an MRI, and she looked at me, and she says, "Well, N equals 1." And I go, "What does that mean?" She says, "It means a study of 1. If it works for you," which it is, "keep doing it." Now, I told her, "Listen, I didn't do this because I thought it might work. I did it because of all the research I did. So I want to compliment you for at least going forward with allowing that product here." But I'm disappointed at the things that I heard the guy from the Farm Bureau say because one of the things that the council member, Feller, was concerned about was we need to help our farmers. I think you should revisit what you've done to make this not work too well, and because I would rather see you guys adopt something we can all live with, all of us, instead of an initiative coming in that I haven't even read yet. So I don't know what you can do now, but I would like you to try and fix this. Thanks.
I'm Teresa Masters. I was here when this marijuana was going through, and I suggested, "The city of Oceanside, with all your beautiful land, grow it yourself, manufacture, plant, harvest, regulate, dispense, and never have another financial problem insofar as anything." But that didn't go over very well. And I'm here for, tonight, to say, "You are not listening or paying attention to the people in need. We are not speaking of getting high on pot. We are speaking of feeling well on a natural plant. If you don't heat it, it doesn't get psychedelic or, and it has a good exchange with the air, with the atmosphere." I don't know where all the fear is coming from, but yes, I do know. We have a law in the state. The medical marijuana needs help. We are, they are regulating it, there are new regulations coming in. What I need to hear from you is we will have facility, there will be a very trained person, there will be resources, they will know the balance of cannabis and THC and CBD. CBD is non-psychoactive, THC, yes, but only if heated. So help your citizens who need and use this because it's legal, and please don't put the extra taxes on it. The recreational people, who are very much available, they have, they are charging medical users the same as recreational, and they're also saying they're less interested in medical because recreational is more lucrative money-wise. Please get off the track you're on now and realize a good number of your citizens, "I do not get high, I don't get drunk, but I do use cannabis, THC minimal, CBD, and it helps." And my MDs are saying now, "Use it, it works." Please change your focus and start representing the very people that vote you in. Adios.
All right. With that, we'll close the public input portion. Councilmember Sanchez? Councilmember Sanchez.
Could staff please respond to some of the questions that were asked?
Good evening, Mayor and honorable council members. I'm going to go ahead and address, I believe, most of the questions or concerns that were raised here, and may have to lean on my colleagues here to answer some of the others. And in terms of the, the primary questions that I believe were raised this evening by members of the public, first off, with regard to the two-month application window. That two-month application window is actually established as a way, we thought it was a reasonable amount of time for people to package an application together. And that two-month window was established in consultation with our consultant, who also agreed that that was a reasonable and common amount of time to put together an application. We are obviously sensitive to the concern that was raised regarding any forthcoming changes to our ordinance, which may loosen up some of our siting requirements, and certainly on that basis would have no problem extending that window further. Actually, one of the other reasons we kept it at two months is just to help people get through the process quicker, because the intent here is to take a look and review the first batch of applications at the conclusion of that two-month period, but certainly if council feels it's reasonable to extend that application window, we wouldn't have any objection to that at all. With respect to the concern that was raised regarding the need to demonstrate proof of capitalization, proof of capitalization is actually one element of the business plan, which is a required piece of the application. And certainly, we don't expect through proof of capitalization for people to be able to demonstrate with a definite, with, I guess, certainty that they have the capital lined up to engage the business. That's really just one of many pieces that we would consider as part of that business plan. Certainly, if they don't have the capitalization lined up in advance, if they have or can demonstrate that they have the wherewithal to secure that funding sometime down the line, I think certainly that would work towards helping their score in terms of that rating criteria, but certainly, it's not a, it's not a black and white issue, or if they don't provide proof of capitalization on the onset, that we would reject their application. That certainly isn't the intent here. With regards to some of the concerns that were raised regarding energy usage, greenhouse gas impacts and so forth, keep in mind that these uses are discretionary and are going to require a conditional use permit. As part of that process, of course, they are subject to SEQA, so things in terms of items such as energy uses, greenhouse gas impacts, certainly all that will be analyzed through that SEQA review. In addition to that, one of the elements of their application package, and one of the items that the applicants will be graded on are their environmental benefits, and part of that include green business practices. Certainly, to the extent that an applicant can demonstrate positive green building practices and operational practices, again, that will help with their score as well, and certainly that would be looked at, in any event, through the conditional use permit process. One of the other comments, I believe, had to do with the city manager's discretion to reject applications, and I would just point out that in the ordinance that was adopted by council, there's a very clear language in the ordinance that demonstrates what's defined as good cause. So it's not an arbitrary process. In order for the city manager to deny an application, there's actually very descriptive language in the ordinance that describes what constitutes good grounds for the denial of an application. I think that was about all I had on my list. One other thing with regards to the fees and how the fees were calculated, I'd probably defer to either Jane or Megan on that one here, but I think that we feel confident that the fees that we're bringing forward will reasonably cover our costs.
Yes, I'd like to speak to the fees. We worked with David McPherson from HDL, who's done over 1,000 cities, worked with it on this type of process. And in the process, he considered not only, it's cost recovery, okay? We can't do any more than what cost recovery is. So he went through and discussed with all of us, the key members that would have input from OPD, Development Services, Finance, City Attorney's Office, City Manager's Office, to determine what was a reasonable amount of time. We pulled together fully burdened rates to determine, so that he could cost it. We also included time from the original onset of working on this. So we're recovering already time spent. So we thought that, and this is based on what we're allowed to do, and so we feel that the fees are fair. As time changes, or things change, we will look at the fees if we find that our cost recovery has changed, but at this point, they have been done just based on complete cost recovery.
I think there were some other questions regarding initial and ongoing inspections, monitoring, forensic bookkeeping, code enforcement. What part of any of that can we, is relative, is reasonably related to, say, to add to a fee?
Currently, we have not identified any of those costs and looked into them. As we develop, this is our first step.
Right.
So as we develop and get into it, this is going to take about six months to even get somebody through the process. So as we've, as we develop, we're going to be bringing back to you fees to ensure that we're getting cost recovery at every step of the way.
And, and so this is, your, your goal was to do net neutral with respect to fees?
Correct.
And what, what costs would be incurred by staff in processing the application, is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay, and, and with respect to ongoing staff work, like, say, monitoring, or ongoing inspections, or code enforcement, that is not something that we can consider as part of these, this application fee? Is that right?
Well, that falls under our normal code enforcement processes that we already have existing and would be charged accordingly. So they would fall under the same...
But not, not to the businesses already, once they pay the application and are starting, right, as a business?
Once they're through the process and up and running, they would be subject to, would you like to speak on that?
I can address that. So there'll be, the ordinance addresses a renewal process, so this is a local license. And remember, we're talking about two different permits at times. There's the permit that is issued really through the city manager's office in a more expedited fashion. There's a separate permit for a conditional use permit. That permit runs with the land, so if somebody buys the business, that permit will transfer through the title, but there's a requirement to get a local license for every operator, and that permit has to be renewed on an annual basis. And so some of the costs of the long-term enforcement of that may be included in the renewal fee. We're not asking for a renewal fee at this time because we don't have sufficient documentation to support it yet.
All right. And when, when we first discussed this in trying to figure out what would be a reasonable time for all of this to come back to us, I think staff had initially indicated, I believe, Ms. Larson, that was, you were the staff person, that you anticipated it would be perhaps five, six months to come back with this, with this fee schedule, but you did it much faster. And now I'm hearing a request possibly for some additional time. Can, can you please address that?
Councilmember Sanchez, mayor and council members, yes, when staff initially was looking at fee development in terms of staff developing the process, we were expecting it could take up to six months. By retaining the services of a consultant who has worked with numerous cities throughout the state of California, and actually brought over 1,200 applicants through the process to success, we were able to utilize their expertise and put this together very quickly and bring it back to you so that we can move forward into the next phase.
All right, and I understand the consultant is not here today, but staff can speak to the qualifications of the expert? Could you do that, please? I know you just said that, that he's worked with other cities and he's actually assisted in processing, what, 1,200 applications?
Correct.
Successfully?
Staff contracted with HDL, which has a cannabis division. They have a full staff, at least five staff in that division, that have worked with cities and counties throughout California. As I stated, they indicate they've had over 1,200 applicants go through a process very similar to what they've outlined for the City of Oceanside. It is designed to ensure that applicants can meet their requirements to get their state license, and they've had an 80 to 85, 6% success rate in having applicants be successful in getting a local license. It is a rigorous process, but that is in order to ensure that they can achieve a state license and be successful and sustainable over the long term.
Were some issues voiced with respect to the requirement that is being proposed, proof of capitalization? Was there any, what was the response from the consultant regarding that, if, if that concern was raised?
I don't know that staff directly asked that question of the consultant, however, I think Jonathan did sufficiently address that. They'll need to demonstrate the ability to obtain the financing, but I don't believe they have to have it all in place when they apply.
Would, would you, I understand we have a workshop in June. Would, could we continue this to another time? This is a public hearing, it would have to be re-noticed, right?
Now, the public hearing portion's closed on the fees. You only have to have a public hearing on the fee component of it, unless we're going to change the fee structure.
Right.
Subject to the discretion of the council, you could continue it to a date certain for deliberation.
I'd like to hear from the other council members with respect to the requests for that time period. Thank you.
Deputy Mayor Lowry.
Well, I want to respond to some of the concerns the community brought up very promptly. First of all, Councilmember Kern and I worked for the past year on creating regulations that would allow medical marijuana operations in the City of Oceanside. We worked with the staff who's here today. We also, we also worked with my council aide, and we, as I've said before, have created hundreds of pages of documents that came in from the state and also the community members and businesses who want to operate here in Oceanside. So to vilify Councilmember Kern for not working hard on this item when there were other council members who actually did nothing but slow the process down is completely inappropriate and inaccurate. So there's that. I have had multiple meetings with staff about this particular item, and I voiced my concerns about the application and the process. I'm encouraged and supportive of the application being brought back to us at a later date, but not in the far distant future, with updates and corrections to certain parts, which I believe are a problem and a hindrance to businesses who want to come to Oceanside. I'm fine with the fees as they've been developed, and got a message from an industry group today that, who said that they thought the fees were too low. That's their opinion. My biggest concerns are with the language, the process, and some of the requirements that are included in the application, and exactly how those requirements apply to new businesses wanting to establish their operations here in Oceanside. I know the assistant city manager, Diana Larson, and the city planner, Jeff Hunt, took copious notes at our meeting that I had with them this week, and I look forward to meeting again to see the progress which needs to be made on this particular application process. And I think that, most of all, the application termination date is not needed, that if people want to apply for the business, we just let them decide to apply. There are very few, we've already looked at it, there are very few, anywhere from one to zero, locations for businesses to open in Oceanside based upon our industrial zoning restrictions, and we have to think about that, but that's a whole other item. So I'm going to make a motion that we approve the staff proposal.
Councilmember Kern?
All right, thank you. A couple things before, I substantially agree with the deputy mayor, but I have some questions. You know, one thing is that we're not perfect up here. You know, I think staff has done a good job, really worked hard. I know deputy mayor and I, we're, this is our 14th, 15th month at working on this. You know, we're trying to get it right. So anybody here that says we're rushing it is absolutely false. I've been working on this for almost a year and a half now. So the idea that we're trying to do this the right way, the idea that citizens of Oceanside voted for this 57%, State of California voted for it 57%, our job as public officials is to carry out the will of the people to the best of our ability. So I have just a couple issues that we can address. One of them, the question is for the city attorney, because on the timeline, we're going to have a workshop on the 20th of June about the setback rules and the one license for APN number. Can we make a decision in that workshop to have a force of ordinance or a force of effect instead of bringing it back to a council meeting? If we make a decision at the workshop, can that move forward? Or we do, we really have to wait till the next council meeting to agendize it?
So you're going to have to give me direction about what the majority of the council wants to do with respect to the three issues that are going to be addressed at the workshop. So you will need a subsequent meeting to introduce and then adopt amendments to the zoning ordinance, should the majority of the council wish to do that. They're not going to be done at the workshop.
Okay, so the, so this timeline we're talking about, so because of that, I would like to move the deadline, if, if you want a deadline, back from August 31st to September 30th. I would like to add a month to that application process, you know, the idea to get that through, so we don't run in... Over. If you... Well... Let's, let's leave it at September 30th, and since that is not the, once we get to the June 20th and we have a clear idea what timelines are, we can bring that date up again, is that correct?
Yes, but one of the issues that you're going to be briefed on in June deals with the issue of dispensaries. There's no fee in this fee structure for dispensaries. So should you adopt it tonight, there will be no fee sitting there. You'd, you know, if you were, the majority of the council wanted to add a dispenser, you'd have to add an amendment to the fee structure.
Okay, but does that require another public hearing?
Yes.
Okay. So if we approve or adopt a dispensary plan on June 20th, we will need a public hearing on August 9th?
Well, if, at the, you're going to give direction, whatever your direction is at the workshop, staff is then going to implement that with, for example, an ordinance amendment, and if that included dispensaries, I'm not saying it would, but if it did, then we would need to have a fee structure to accompany it.
Okay.
And we'd have to have a public hearing.
And, but we can have a public hearing just on dispensaries? We wouldn't have to reopen all this other...
It would be an amendment to the fee structure, that's before you to...
Okay.
To add that fee.
Thank you. I have another question, and actually, it's still directed to the city attorney. On our facility cost recovery, I don't see anything for the city attorney's office listed as cost recovery.
That's correct. So the question is why?
Can I ask why?
I think we felt that we don't know how much, I mean, I've, as you probably know, I've spent a lot of time and resources putting many, many versions of this ordinance together. We didn't think that we were going to try and go back and recover that cost. The costs that we will incur ongoing are likely to be in enforcement actions, and those will be against a local licensee that is in violation. And so we didn't think it was appropriate, if there were licensees who were not in violation, to be paying the staff time of the city attorney's office to bring enforcement action. So that is something that will be looked at when you're looking at the renewal fee. Again, I told you earlier, there is no renewal fee here. The costs of ongoing enforcement are something that we're going to have to look at when we have that.
Okay. And just a point of clarification, CUP does run with the land, but the license is not transferable. The state says you cannot transfer these marijuana licenses, you have to reapply and start from scratch to get a new license. So it's not like somebody gets in, they get the business up and running, they have the CUP, and so I'm going to sell it to the guy down the street. That guy down the street has to come in and go through this whole process anew. So they'll have to start from scratch to go through this, you know, all the life scan and everything. I'm still kind of stuck on this proof of capitalization as part of the business plan. We have the business plan listed twice here with different point values, and so I, you have to reach a certain number of points to get granted a license. So if the person does not have that proof of capitalization, he's going to get, or she is going to get... she is going to get dinged on that particular part of the business plan. So instead of getting the 300 or 400 points, depending on what zone you're in, you know, that might prevent them from getting a license because they don't have the full point value for the business plan. So I, I'm just trying to figure out how we address that. Is there something in there that we can work on that with? I, I'm just concerned that, because, you know, we're feeling our way through this, and I understand that we're trying to get, we're trying to help people, and we're trying to make it as objective as possible. You know, we try to take the subjectivity out of the application process, just like all our other processes, and to do that. So Jonathan or Jane, do you have any comment?
We can definitely look at that wording. As I presented tonight, is one of the things to allow us to make some changes. I'd like to do a little research on how other cities are handling it, and if so, make the changes appropriately, to make it more clear and easy to follow.
Okay, thank you. And the other thing I think Councilmember Sanchez brought up about code enforcement actions, we have code enforcement actions now. The idea, if you violate code, we send a code enforcement officer out there, he cites you. If you reoffend, it's a 500, then 1,000, then, you know, 1,000. We have a system in place for code actions. So I think once you're up and running, those normal, and the normal code actions do take place, as far as code enforcement. So anyway, I will second the deputy mayor's motion if you-
I'd like to modify it first. Timing, on the timing issue.
Oh, okay, well, I was going to ask you if you'd be okay with this-
Well, I'd, I'd be okay with extending the time to have no end date so that the people who want to apply can just get in line, and we can have that happen. Rather than saying it's over on some specific month, at the end of the month, we can just have the people put in their applications, and staff can get to them when they get to them.
Yeah, I, I think that's an appropriate thing, because it's just like everything else, that, you know, people come in, if somebody wants to open a bar downtown, we don't say you have a certain deadline. But I, I think because we're going through this the first time, there's going to be a lot of different movement of things to take away that ending date, and so when they apply, the applications will be on a first-come, first-served basis then. It's not like we're going to batch them and do it all after a certain deadline, but it's a first-come, first, first-come, first-served. I, I know in Development Services, you know, there's a certain point in time that you have your application deemed complete. So I, I imagine this is going to be very similar to that, that they're going to submit something, something may be missing, you're going to send it back like a screen check, and then at a certain point in time, somebody's going to have to deem the application complete to move forward. So I, I would agree with that.
Thank you.
No end date.
Ms. Larson?
And I'll second that modification.
Thank you.
Mayor and councilmembers, I just wanted to address one point of clarification, and that's regarding the workshop on June 20th. While staff understands that the council will be getting a report on dispensaries and providing direction, we felt like we had clear direction already to look at the 1,000-foot setback and one per legal lot limitations. We were actually intending to have an ordinance available so that the council could introduce those two items at that time, should that be their preference.
Okay, I wasn't aware of that. So I'll be working on an ordinance, I guess. I'll add that to my calendar.
Specific items previously identified by council.
Thank you. So you can second.
Councilmember Sanchez.
Thank you. Thank you. Well, I think that the open date does, will not work as well because we are, we are basically starting off, and the whole process, to me, the way it was presented by staff, which was basically the consultant's work, is that there is definitely a determination of eligibility in that application, phase one, phase two, initial ranking of the applicants, phase three, second ranking of applicants. So there's definitely the sense of ranking these, and then finally having a recommendation from the city manager. So all of that is a process. If you only have, if it's open-ended, then I guess, I mean, staff could do like quarterly report, you know? Yes, it looks like you're raising your hand.
Yeah, one, one of the options that council could consider, because we did, we did discuss this as an alternative, is to actually have kind of like a rolling deadline where you may have an initial cutoff date at two months, but then it opens back up again, you have another one in two months, so that we are able to group them and batch them. And it would actually be a lot more efficient on our end to actually consider them in batches.
Right.
So if you, you know, establish rolling deadlines, then, you know, it does open it up indefinitely, but at the same time, we're able to kind of batch them and look at them, you know, sequentially.
Right. It would seem to be more efficient. So I would suggest to the maker and the second that, that that, that you consider doing that, and having the first deadline be the September 30th date, and then, you know, have the ongoing batch dates, two months apart or three months apart.
Okay, I'm, can you, I asked about this yesterday in the meeting I had with staff, and they said that what you just said, we can change that. But if it has to come back to the council again with more notification, another 60 days becomes 90, which becomes 120, then we're talking, not about 2019, we're talking about 2020. So if we take two months' worth of applications and we take a two-month break, we're already talking about mid-2019. So how do we accommodate that flexibility? Do we just say there's a one date, everybody get your, get your applications in, there's another date that starts immediately after that? Because otherwise, if we take a break, then what? What's the difference in just letting people apply? You can, the city staff, if anything, knows how to shelve items to take them by order. I've seen that.
As, as I would suggest, and certainly open this direction from council, but in my mind, we would just go ahead and open it, that, that next batch date immediately after that. There wouldn't necessarily be a reason to do a, you know, two-month break or so to get through that first batch of applications. It just kind of establishes a hard, fast deadline to look at one grouping versus the next. So unless, I hear differently, I don't think that we would have any issue opening up that next window immediately thereafter. I think it gets us to the same place as having an indefinite deadline.
Okay, so start with this first date that Councilmember Kern proposed of September 31st.
Which is actually a Sunday, by the way.
And then immediately start another 60-day window right after that.
Right.
October 1st, then, which is a Monday.
October 1st would be a Monday.
But, Mayor, can I speak? I'm just, I, I know we're kind of spitballing here, but the idea that if we have these rolling dates that say, okay, we're going to open up the next batch of applications September 1st, different set of applications that we can actually have overlapping time. So September 1st to October 31st would be the next round, and then October 1st to November 30th would be the next round. So every application, is that a workable thing? I see Jane shaking her head no.
I believe it'd probably be best to do the initial as one batch, and then as Jonathan had recommended, is just have an open, ongoing application time. They can just apply as they come in. We anticipate the initial to be the biggest group, and for efficiencies and for the applicants as well, the, the batch would be the best way. But after that, I personally don't have a problem recommending just open, come in when you can.
So what I'm hearing is that we have the first batch September 30th, then after that, we really don't have a batch process at all, that we just roll it?
October 1st.
Is that agreeable?
It's a Sunday.
So you catching all this, Sac?
I've got it, yeah. All right, thank you.
So I have-
September 1st, September 30th is a Sunday.
I have a question for staff. So the application period from the slide is going to open this week. Correct?
The application, we will not be accepted until June 25th.
June 25th. And so the application period is going to close on October 1st.
Correct.
So we're not going to do anything with any applications between now and October 1st.
That is correct.
Right.
Other than when we receive-
Other than collecting them.
Correct.
So no action will be taken on those applications between now and October 1st.
That'll be the batch, that'll be the first batch, October 1st. Now, yeah-
Wait, so I've got a question. Are you saying that the staff won't begin processing?
No.
That's why I'm asking, yes. From what I understand-
You're not going to do any processing, you're just going to, you're not going to make sure they dotted the i's and crossed the t's? One of our questions from earlier this week.
One of the, part of our process will be going over the packet when it's delivered to help ensure that it's as complete as possible. And then also, as we go through the process, if we see that there's a transposition, of course, we're going to be reasonable and work with the applicants so that they're successful.
So you'll do that kind of processing, but not give us any conclusions then?
We're waiting for the batch so that we can run the initial group through the process.
Okay.
And then, I'm sorry.
Well, I was going to call in Councilmember Feller.
When will the application be available online?
We expect to have it online by June 4th, at the very latest, if not sooner.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Feller.
2020 was sounding good. If, if this was about CBD, I would probably be trying to help out here, but it's not, and I also agree, the fees should probably be higher. But the thing that I noticed in here is, it talks about owners in the application, and I mentioned to the city attorney, it should be mentioned for background checks. It should be clearly denoted, I think, that it's investors, financiers, anybody that's involved in the owner, ownership, whether it's for the money, they should, that should be on the application as well. So that's my only comment.
We have a motion in a second. Please vote.
Okay, so the motion was modified only by the date, which was-
I can read it for you if you'd like.
October 1st.
Yes, so motion to-
That's the only modification.
Yes, so the modification is, I have it written down, so make sure you're clearly voting. Motion to approve staff recommendations and to modify the end date for the first batch of commercial medical cannabis facility applications to be received on October 1st, 2018. The commercial medical cannabis facility application period will be opened without an end date in the, in their perpetuity thereafter.
But there's no changes to the regulatory fees or the authorization for the background checks.
Correct.
Please vote.
Motion approved 4-1. Feller now.
We will take a short break until 7:30.